Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Glen Falls County Council Tuesday, April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Our first order of business is a pledge of allegiance led this evening by scout troop number two, St. Mary's. Henry Nolan, Julian, and Anthony, if you would please step up to the microphone and lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fact of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
Thank you very much. All right, this is a part of the council meeting where we opened it up with all the comments. If there's anybody that would like to come to the microphone, please state your name, your address, and the reason for your presence here before us this evening. Peter, is there anybody online?
There isn't. Somebody's got to, right?
Step up to the mic, buddy.
Hello there. My name is Joseph Kelly. I'm from Whitehall, New York, three Second Avenue. I'm interested in, I currently got a license for an adult-use cannabis dispensary, and I'd like to come down to the Glen Falls area. Right now, there is only, currently, there is eleven of us in the entire capital region. As you can imagine, everybody's trying to head to Troy, Albany's connected. I was offered a store last Tuesday in Troy, but I declined because just the crime rate and things like that, that's already down there. And we can't put the money in the banks right this moment. So traveling hour and twenty minutes daily, seven days a week, with that kind of situation, I didn't want to be doing. It is, statistics do show now, if you look, there was a webinar this morning in New York City, and they were saying that where dispensaries are located, because of the high security that New York State is requiring, cameras, surveillance, lots of it, crime actually goes down in the area. Nobody wants to be on camera. We know how that, you know, incriminates everybody. I've got a business relationship a little bit with Peter Shabat, so he's checking out a couple of different places in the area. I've looked at a few on Glen Street the last couple of days, made a few contacts, spoke with a gentleman down here today, I believe, named Jeff Flags, gave me some information and put me in touch with some people. I'm looking about doing it exactly the right way, following all the rules and the regulations of the state. And like I said, there's only eleven of us in the entire capital region. When the program is completely done, I do not believe you're going to see any more than twenty in the entire region, you know? So it's important. There's also tax dollars that are tagged to this. It's three percent of the sales. I'm not sure if you're aware of that. In my community in Whitehall, we've opted to do it. I want to do a store up there at some point, but right now, the way the state's leaving this, I could have a delivery service-only site in Whitehall, which would benefit my community with the tax dollars, but it's just a delivery service out of that location. And then I can still have a store elsewhere. We can have up to five locations. Glen Falls is a beautiful city, you know? It's growing. It's growing very fast. I know this is new to everybody. It's been illegal for a lot of years, but you obviously, as far as I know, Glen Falls has opted in for sales. And I guess that's all I have to say. Just looking to see if it's accepted in the area, not accepted in the area. I know the state says we have to be, I own a liquor store also up in Whitehall, so we have, you have to be five hundred feet away from schools, and I believe two hundred feet from places of worship. And like I said, the security's a big thing. But I do own several businesses in Whitehall under one corporation. There is Joe's Pizza, there is Buster's Brewing Barbecue, Sweet Genevieve's Ice Cream, and Bigfoot Wine and Liquor.
You sound like all good.
They are good. I'm just, I'm in a very small, very small community, you know? It's tough up there. So with this cannabis industry, it's going to be big. I think it's going to be big in Whitehall also. This morning, the webinar was saying, you know, they're asking questions because we're getting hit with what we call a weed tax. If we go to rent a place, you know, that's normally renting for two thousand dollars, we're being told nine thousand, twelve thousand, because they think we're going to be making so much money. So that's kind of putting the pension a lot of places also. This program, when that New York State has developed with these justice-revealed and justice-reformed individuals, they're actually, when they find a place, the first thing is, they could find us a place and match us with it, and they pay like upfront, five-to-ten-year lease upfront to the landowner. And they cut me out of it. So like what they would do is contact the landowner, and they would set up a lease with them. They pay upfront, and then I pay dollar-for-dollar what they paid, but back to the program, so that they can help other cardholders get their business off the ground. So there's, there's a lot of money involved in that end of the situation. They're looking for long-term leases, you know? They will do a five-year lease, but we're really looking to do something longer term. And then they also have another fund that comes in and actually helps get our stores off the ground with inventory, with technology, with the security, you know? You have to do everything the way they want it done, and through the vendors that they want, for the most part. We have a choice somewhat, but it's all done above board and, you know, with the best security in mind, you know? I guess that's it. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Kelly?
Well, I just saying, talking with Jeff is probably the best way to go. It's our economic development group, so.
Yep, he seemed to be open-minded about the situation.
And did you provide him with a business plan or anything like that, or it's just a...
No, no, just about a half-hour conversation this morning before he was on his way to a meeting. He's going to get back in touch with me at a later date. Right now, I'm approved, so you're looking for a location, and then we don't get any more information until we get a location.
Where are you looking? I'm just curious. Are you in the city or are you looking?
Um, I actually looked on Glen Street, right down near the circle, near forty-two degrees. There's like three different places there, but a couple are only for sale. There is a program with the state where they'll actually purchase the building also, but I was looking for the lease end of it. But Peter Shabat, when I was talking with him, we actually looked at the Rite Aid. It's kind of big. I think that's eighty-five hundred square feet. The advice is really, we only need about eighteen to two thousand square feet to make it. You know, a lot of these places are going with ten, fifteen, twenty employees and stuff, and that's just going to sink them, you know? It's actually recommended for only two to three employees, depending on the location.
Would you do a delivery yard with us also?
If it was, if it wasn't an issue, yes. With the state of New York, it's not an issue. But if Glen Falls had an issue with it, then I wouldn't, obviously, I wouldn't. I do plan on using Whitehall as a delivery location, you know, so that that community can benefit from the taxes also.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kelly. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? If not, we are starting a new thing with our new thing, very formal. Department head reports, and our first lucky contestant, won the lottery, is our superintendent of public works, Mr. Tom Gerard. Mr. Gerard, please step up.
Do I need to step up?
Yes, yes. Yeah, please, and give applause.
Good evening. Tom Gerard, Glen Falls, DPW Superintendent. Yeah, I was asked to come and speak a little bit about the DPW, and so I came, and I'm going to talk. When it snows, we plow. When the grass grows, we mow it. Thank you. Now, so the winter's over. Even though it wasn't a huge storm winter this year, it was a tough winter for the DPW crew. We had a lot of wet, heavy snow, especially the last two snowstorms. I mean, we took down a lot of trees and limbs and branches and stuff, which turned out okay because it gave our crews and the chipper some work in late March, or late February and early March and through March. So that was pretty good. Being a late winter, we did end up, the tree group continued cutting most of the whole winter except for the snowy weeks. So we got a lot of trees down. We're really, pretty much, I don't want to say that a lot, but we're pretty well caught up with trees right now, takedowns, which is unusual going into this time of year. And the rec department, you know, we kept the, you know, we worked the recreation facility, but we actually have a couple of other guys that are sort of labors during that time of year, and we continue cleaning Crandall Park. I don't know if anybody knows Crandall Park. We clean the brush all the way around. We're really getting ready for fire ice because we thought it was going to be really nice. Unfortunately, it didn't, didn't work that way, but we were ready for it. And on a good note, two good notes, the equipment held up really well. We had no major problems with any of the equipment, and we did get our bucket truck, which you people approved for this year's budget. We got it delivered in February, so we have a new bucket truck. And today, the old bucket truck raked wet, so it worked out pretty well. Budget-wise, which you guys are, I'm sure, the most important, is we're in really good shape budget-wise. A lot of overtime, because even the storms end up on regular workdays, which is unusual. So the budget were doing really well.
How many employees do you have?
Well, I'll get to that at the very end, but thanks for asking, because that is one of the, one of the biggest problems I have.
I just wanted to interrupt you. Is there some way you can turn on the feedback on the seaters, or is that not? Sorry. Just asking. It's hard to hear Mr. Gerard, so I just wanted to make sure. It's fine. Okay.
Can talk away or talk close.
Sorry. Thank you.
DPW.
No, no, don't be sorry about that.
Okay, so we're going to continue on, just like, just like my notes here. So as we all look out the window, we had a quick start to spring or slash summer. I'm not sure what it is. And as we just took out the ice from the rec center last Thursday, closed the building down. Monday, yesterday, we put up the pickleball, because they are the most important thing in the city of Glen Falls come spring. Tennis courts and basketball courts at Crandall Park are now open.
Myself is playing until nine o'clock last night.
Kids are playing at East Field. There'll be, Ed, you're taking my thunder. That's coming up. We did start a open pickup yesterday, so debris, it's good news we made it through pretty much the whole third ward, which is our biggest ward and has the most debris out there. Contractor for the sidewalks, they started at the end of last week, right before Good Friday, and they're starting on Grand Avenue. And so that, that is going on pretty well. On the renovations of the playgrounds, I'm sure you're all aware now that we're tearing up all the playgrounds. We already did Crando, did East mostly, which is going to be painted as soon as the weather breaks, gets a little warmer. We met with the contractor today. They're going to be starting Murray Street May first, and they're going to start, they're going to start and finish Murray Street, then move over to Sagmore, finish, start and finish, move over to Mount Combs, so they're not going to have three dug up at the same time. They'll be doing it. The painter, the man that does the painting was also at the meeting this morning, and as, as nice as the weather is, it's still getting cold at night. It's just not painting weather. So he probably won't be painting until mid-May, maybe even a little bit later. But, so they're all underway. Roof at the DPW, part that's going to come out of money, and we're waiting on final specs. We've had two roofers come in and try to give us specs on that, so, you know, two different ideas. But another thing I've learned recently is roofing is a window of opportunity, because they only will go until June first, and then they, the schools take over. So they got to do all the schoolwork between June first and September fifteenth, and then they'll be back. So it's looking like a fall project for the DPW, which is fine, you know? We'll get through the summer with that. Fine. Really, the last thing I have for, one of my biggest goals this year was, and Ed would be happy, East Field, if you've been down by East Field, we're cleaning around that whole fence, around the pavilion, so you can see the pond. Going to get the pond back up, stocked with some fish, get the fountain back working. I don't know the last time it worked, Ed. Yeah, probably. Yeah, hopefully. And as Ed asked earlier, how many employees do they have? It's, it's a floating number every day. I don't even really know. Right now, I know I'm down six employees. Three, two retired, one jump ship, three around injured reserve. I don't know if one of them needs to come back. So I actually know the duty today, so we're trying to work on a game plan. And I'm sure if your people are watching, just like I am, the governor is loosening some of the rules, I think, so we can, we're talking about bringing a couple retirees back, because they can make a little bit more money than they were in the past. So I'm interviewing one of the people that retired a year and a half ago tomorrow. Going to bring in some labors instead of MEOs, because nobody has a CDL right now. I do have a good story. We brought in a young man that was having some difficulties. So we took a chance. We hired him. We paid for his CDL classes and stuff. He passed the CDL for first, first attempt. Monday, he was promoted to an MEO, which is a really good story. Any questions?
Just a comment. Never three guy down there is smaller than they used to be. Would you do good or...
Thank you. I think we're, I think the number's somewhere around twenty-four. I mean, when we started open pickup, we didn't have a person. We had two guys who went out and picked up bags, one guy doing the garbage, and everybody else was on open pickup. So we're getting there, but, you know, knock on wood, because I think we've handled the demands pretty well.
I did get a text this morning, a good text, said the morning new street sweeper is so much better than the old one. Doesn't leave the trailer dirt behind. LOL. Nice work, DPW.
I will not comment on that. It's the same, it's the same. Tell that person, thank you.
Well, I also just really appreciate you and everything that DPW does. I feel like you are the department head I call most with my various issues that constituents have, and you're so responsive. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
If the city doesn't know where to go, they always start going to you guys.
I, I have a great, a great staff. I got guys that are much better than me.
That's true. The snowstorm in the, in his office, and the phone rings, and it went from national grid to spectrum to Tom. And, you know, no one wanted to touch it, but Tom did, so I appreciate all that that you guys do. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, committee reports. Councilman Nunn.
Well, I don't know where the sustainability's going, since our big project's evolving now. So we'll have to reevaluate some of the banking. These places concerned, food streets, we can add.
Well, we have our next meeting on...
Third, third Tuesday.
You can see on the month, so I'm sure we'll have some just stuff to talk about.
It's nice to see that, you know, we moved on with solar panels and the hydro.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Been around a lot longer than I have, and those things. Nice to hear the progress anyways.
Councilperson Lander.
The labor personnel committee will commence preliminary discussions on, for the upcoming police union contract on the twenty-seventh of April.
Thank you. Councilperson Con.
The building and codes committee is meeting tomorrow. We're going to have a follow-up discussion after our presentation that we had from Granicus on short-term rentals. We also got some data from the county, so we'll talk about that. We're going to continue working on the noise ordinance. Thank you to Councilman Latham for getting us started with a working draft. And we will also be reviewing some updated permit applications that the building and codes department wants us to look at before putting up. The recreation committee is going to be meeting on April twentieth, and we're going to be continuing the work to improve, to make improvements to parks. We're focusing on the fields at Murray Street, because, as Tom mentioned, this summer, we're going to be renovating the courts at several parks. But we also want to take a look at the fields to create some places for people to, you know, play lacrosse, play soccer, have good use of fields. And we know that we lost some field space on the La Rose Street fields. It went away. So that's our next project.
Councilperson Lander.
On April fifth, the Climate Smarts Community Task Force met. We discussed Earth Day planning. Earth Day will be Saturday, April twenty-second, from ten AM to two PM at City Park. There'll be a raffle. We'll be raffling off some prizes that Kate Bruce has gotten together for the committee, and we'll be doing some stuff to get some money together for some sustainability projects, including some upkeep of the, of the city park itself. And so those will be going on. We'll be trying to get in contact with a bid about using a tree planting for the Arbor Day Foundation as part of a make-good that we have with them. So we just need to get that kind of together, so we have that all happening on Earth Day. Also, we were talking about different sustainability programs we've recently completed in the city or are in progress in the city, such as the LED streetlights, the connector trail to Peter Canal, our park improvements, our ADA transition plan, which we recently passed, complete streets plan, policy that we're voting on today, EVs for code enforcement, bicycle patrol for Glen Falls Police Department, the heat pump that will be being installed here in City Hall, the greenhouse gas inventories, the climate action plans, et cetera, that goes on from there. But we want to get that out in front of the public, so the public knows what we're being, what we've been doing on sustainability and other things that we have on our radar for the near future. We also talked about a clean energy communities credit with a contract with U Source. We're going to have drop stream off from the Capitol District Planning Group, follow up with that. But that goes into our in terrace, in terrace consultants about the grant that we have with them for our climate action plans and inventories. We also talked about PACE financing, which is for different projects where we want to get, what do you call that, energy, you know, clean energy financed in through the project, and just see what kinds of projects we might be able to use that for, and maybe we might be able to scout out some, some folks that could use that, that type of financing. And we talked about integrating the Climate Smarts Communities meetings with the Sustainability Committee meetings, because there's a lot of overlap. I had one other thing about Capital Streets, which is an Albany-based group working for accessible and sustainable transportation network, and that that was somebody we might be able to use as a resource in the future. They're just, I think they just incorporated a 503C last month. Then also, on Wednesday, April fifth, we had a technology committee meeting. We had a presentation from Greenlight Networks, which is bringing fiber optic to this area. They're in Clifton Park right now. They're based, I think, out of Rochester, but or someplace out west. They're coming into the area. They talked about, you know, the different things that they can offer, their services about for a half gig through putt, fifty bucks a month, seventy-five for one gig, a hundred a month for two gig, which is very reasonable. They also participate in the Affordable Connectivity Program, which gives a thirty-eight-dollar discount. It does fiber to home or small business, and it's fiber from the pole. And they would, if, if we signed an agreement with them, offer free service for our fire department in exchange for housing and some equipment there. We talked about the WISP, and we had some things with, we need to get our email lists updated, and we need to get reading the tests going in with our, with our staff. And we've been following up since the meeting with that, too, so most of the notes that I have here are outdated. So I'll just move on from that, too. We had a discussion on cameras and had some follow-up things for watershed areas about maybe not doing that with something that we have to have power to and Wi-Fi to, that maybe we might want to do more like trail cameras. In that instance, we talked also a little, oh wait, tabled internet consolidation until next month, because we kind of ran out of time, as I'm doing right now.
The, how are we able to franchise agree with that?
Franchise agreement, right now, the, I'm trying to follow up with Department of State, because there was some confusion about the way the Department of State had presented what we needed to do as steps to what they're, what they had recently recommended to me, so that we're going to get a little bit of clarity on that before moving forward. But we're, we kind of seem like we're in a certain place, but we need those questions.
Okay, good. Great. Thank you. All right, awesome. So now that that's done, we're going to move on to our voice vote. So without further ado, resolution approving the minutes of our March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the Glen Falls County Council. Resolution number two to approve the City Clerk's monthly and PBB parking violation bureau report. And three, resolution to approve the building codes monthly report for March first, March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Do you have a motion, please? Second. Okay. On favor? Aye. We're onto our roll call vote. Is there anyone who would like to pull any of these items off the agenda for discussion? Hearing none. Resolution to approve the request to suspend the city's open container lot between hours of twelve noon to three PM on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, during the Glen Falls Collaborative Winds Fest event. The suspension shall only apply to the boundaries of the event, which are the portions of Glen Street, Ridge Street, Bay Street, and Maple Street, where the event will be held. A federal pain was secured by both the Glen Falls Police Department and the Glen Falls Fire Department. And event staff will monitor the boundaries for compliance. Resolution number five to increase the revenue line, A zero zero nine 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 four zero eight nine, general government aid and ARPA, by four thousand five hundred dollars, and increase expense line, A two three one two zero dash one zero zero zero, personal services by four thousand five hundred dollars, to correct, to correct the omission of two Glen Falls Police Department officers who have left off or had the bonus incorrectly calculated on their initial list of receiving COVID first responder bonuses. This was for qualifying police officers serving at Glen Falls Police Department during the federally defined pandemic emergency period. Resolution six to increase general fund revenue line, A zero zero nine 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 two dash two two seven zero. Resolution six, to increase general fund revenue line A zero zero nine 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 two dash two two seven zero. Miscellaneous revenue by three thousand three hundred dollars and to increase expense line A six seven one four five four four seven nine, ice cream, other contracted services by three thousand three hundred dollars for the AYHA Aderamic Youth Hockey Association's contribution for the repair of the ice chiller at the Recreation Center on Ice. Resolution number seven, to approve city, City of Glen's Falls Community Development paying payments in the amount of six thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars and one cent. Resolution eight, to increase the general fund revenue line A zero zero nine 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 one dash one five eight nine A, miscellaneous public safety income by seven hundred and fifty dollars and increase expense line A two three zero two zero dash four three seven nine by seven hundred and fifty dollars for the reimbursement of tie bars from the PBA Police Network Association. Resolution number nine, resolution to increase revenue line A zero zero nine 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 dash four zero eight nine, general government aid, ARPA, by nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars to create, to create an increased account line A one one four four zero dash two two zero zero, equipment by nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars to move forward with the purchase of a Canon solution Quattro X four four five zero scanner for the engineering department on the County of DePauwish contract, number F, I think it's an I, FIR zero two five one one eight NIPA. Resolution number ten, to allow the Glen's Falls National Bank to have their contractor at their expense resurface a portion of the city property in the Elm Street parking lot that they have been utilizing for their construction services. A certificate of insurance will be issued naming the season of Glen's Falls' additional maturity. Resolution number eleven, resolution to approve the appointment of Jane Reed, Denise Conklin, Mary Gooden, Dr. John Cordes, to various positions in the Glen's Falls Urban Renewal Agency, and to further approve the mayor's appointment of Patrick Dallas, CEO of the agency. Resolution number twelve, to adopt the City of Glen's Falls Complete Streets Policy and its recommended action items. Resolution number thirteen, to approve the mobile food unit license application due from Collin Mab to the business at Spaling Fun Concessions at three oh one M I Road, Middle Grove, New York, one two eight five zero. To venue a park for the Fourth July celebration of the Halle Crandall Park. Not park, but park on July third, two thousand twenty-three. Resolution number fourteen, to approve mobile food unit license application of Kristen Flaxon to business at Friends Coffee Works LLC, twelve sixty-nine LeFoy Avenue, Hudson Falls, for their seasonal six-month license to operate food concession trailer in the City of Glen's Falls and also at the Sherpa for the two thousand twenty-three season. Resolution fifteen, to retroactively approve an encroachment permit as approved by Mayor Collins on March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three for NIM's Outdoor Services Inc., fifteen forty-six State Route one ninety-six, Fort Edward, New York, to repair the city's damaged lawn at twelve Catherine Street, Glen's Falls due to a tractor trailer turning around with the work to be completed in one day. Resolution sixteen, to approve the warrant. Do you have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Dunn.
Yes.
Councilman Leonard.
Yes.
Councilman Marshall.
Yes.
Councilman Dunn.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. All right, mine's a whole business. Councilperson Dunn.
I had a woman on the twelve Catherine Street, didn't you, call? I talked to the mayor on this. I asked who the junkyard down there on Bear Street. They brought in a truck with a bad, you know, the bike names, steel I D. They backed into a lawn, almost hit the house with that truck. And did a lot of damage to lawn. And I talked to the mayor about something we'll be done because the people just can't live down there like that anymore.
Well, we just approved resolution fifteen to have that fixed.
Yeah, I know that, but yeah. Moore's got to do that.
Okay. Any?
No, that's.
Councilperson Leonard.
I'd like to acknowledge the hard work and persistence done by Councilman Latham on the Complete Streets Project and Resolution. I knew absolutely nothing about this when I became a councilman, only to hear that past administrations for eleven years had continued to kick the can down the road. So, and I'd like to thank you for educating me and bringing something to fruition, the definite benefit to the community. Thanks.
Councilperson Leonard.
You know, we, I guess, I don't know whether it was a month ago or so, we put out an announcement that talked about where the polling places would be for constituents now that we changed the board boundaries. And in that announcement, there was a map that Sarah Frankenfeld from County GIS created for us. And I've had several constituents recently reach out to me and say, "I'm confused. What ward am I in now?" Because we changed the boundaries. And it used to be easy to describe Ward Three. It was like a square, but now it doesn't look like that. So I myself sometimes have to go and plug in an address. So I just wanted to highlight that in case anyone didn't see it. There is an interactive feature and it's on our website and you can plug in any address and it'll tell you what ward you're in. And I think that is going to be useful for people in the coming months as we all kind of adjust.
Certainly useful for me.
Yeah.
I didn't even say that, so.
Yeah. So I'm thanking you to Sarah for making that for us as well.
Yeah, and just to, with Ward Four, our polling place is now part of Ward Five. So just to get it out there, our polling place, this, you know, this election cycle will be at the Church of the Messiah on, on Glen Street. And that's also a lot of people we used to be in that district because that's where Ward Four kind of shifted.
Yeah, we, we, we were only responsible for creating the board of boundaries and the board of elections was, is responsible for creating the election districts and the polling places. So, you know, that's going to take a little bit of time, but we've got a few primaries, so that will, some people will get, get to know their polling places. Councilman Latham, do you have any?
Yeah, I'll be having a, just kind of related to this somewhat, a meet the, meet the ward representative at Beamer's Pub on Wednesday, the twenty-fifth.
What time?
Seven PM. I want to say seven PM. I'm going to say seven PM, so I'm going to stick with that.
Beamer's Pub?
Yes, Beamer's Pub on South Street. In Ward Four.
And that's Wednesday, if you like that?
Wednesday, the twenty-fifth.
Awesome. Great.
Are you naming them in the bar?
It might be twenty-sixth because I think Tuesday is the twenty-fifth. So I'm saying Wednesday, the twenty-sixth.
Wednesday, the twenty-sixth. Wednesday, the twenty-sixth. Meeting council, councilperson at seven PM, Beamer's Pub on South Street.
Yes, thank you.
I did share that with some of my former constituents who are now work constituents so that they could get to know you.
Our relay constituents.
I will say, when you had your, your meet the, meet your elected officials, it was a very nice turnout. It was a good, so it's valuable to get that.
Yeah.
All right, I have no, well, whole businesses, as our super difficult works is, as stated, we are in open pickup now. Seen a lot of piles and I've also seen a lot of lawn and leaf bags, which is great because they get picked up much quicker than the piles do. So if you are so, feel so inclined, please bag your stuff. If not, you can certainly leave your lawn and leaf on the side of the road, but, and we will go through as quickly as possible. New business. Councilperson Leonard.
Thank you. And just to kind of jump on what you said, Jim, about the bagging stuff in the street. The real benefit to that is to keep side soil and grass clippings out of our sewers, which are not very good shape to begin with, and that just makes it worse. So keep in mind that. The city's looking to hire some seasonal summer staff in the Recreation Department, park attendants, lifeguards, the kids camp counselors. So anybody who may know someone or is interested in one of those, you can contact some of you all. An email I received this morning, it was nice to see that we were awarded by the Department of Transportation basically what I would call a technical grant, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to help us facilitate transportation projects here in the city. And I think the most notable thing in that release was the fact that we were one of the only cities in Upstate New York to give it. So that's, that's a pretty nice thing to have happen to us. And lastly, for insurance, nicely it's sunny and warm outside. But remember that the state of New York is the burn ban in effect until May fourteenth, so there's a lot of questions about how that affects small fire pits and people's backyards. All I'll say to you is be careful.
Councilperson Con.
And the fire pits in the backyards are not legal in the city anyway. We can, you can have a gas fire.
Control flint.
Yes. Which is hard, hard to know because everybody cares to have.
Everybody.
And I don't think that the, the ban affects the gas fire pits.
Right.
But I have no new business.
Councilperson Leonard.
Special Projects will be meeting on Tuesday, the eighteenth, at two PM. We're going to be discussing parking and other things.
Shut up.
Shut up. Here's a spoiler alert.
I have two things that you guys don't see here. You pack it on your agenda, on your new business. Just the mayor, the mayor had provided us with our sidewalk list and concrete list and paving list. If you have any suggestions or additions that you would like, please bring them to his attention by the first of May is when he's looking for it. If we want to add any, any streets or any sidewalks that he knows there. So if you could do that, that would be fantastic. And I, I don't know if I'm going to steal the mayor's thunder here, but since I've got him, I'm going to tell you guys. The sister cities relationship to the community with Saba Japan. We're celebrating our thirty-fifth anniversary with them and, which is exciting. And the mayor and the city council chairman, along with some other dignitaries will be coming to visit Glen's Falls and North County April twentieth. There is going to be a ceremony on the twenty-first. They're going to be visiting City Hall. I know the mayor came to provide, give them some gifts and welcoming them. And then there's going to be downtown walk. They're going to visit the library. Then I think they're doing, they're going to do lunch downtown. So I'm sure you'll get something, but I want to get that at least on your radars. So you could have a little time to plan since it's during the day. I know sometimes that can be tough. So I have no other business. I will open it up for public out. If there's anyone that has anything that they would like to talk to the council about after this exciting meeting. Pete, do we have any?
Resort.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn. Second. All fit? Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Thanks for coming.